... Benefit is he has a corner. It makes the setback larger. Kind of constructed with regards to a portal drive. Kind of doesn't make much sense to put the drive, the garage anywhere's on So it's not it's on the street side. Can he get the benefit some other way? Like I said, put it on the other We already have the paved driveway. Five point nine. So we believe that there's no other way that we can put it on that property to get the same result. Is it substantial? Will it have an environmental conditions? No. Or see how a proposed garage that just gonna have an impact on find that the garage there. It's gonna fit right into the perhaps just wasn't done. And anyone to permit this individual to have the garage that he's not had for the last thirty years?
More comments? I think, I think when people are trying to dodge the light lost homes.
That is where in essence would be twenty-five feet in length. He's parking a car ten feet discovering him.
No, the only so we would recommend that you make sure you don't put there where it's gonna be detrimental for somebody getting in and out if he pops a vehicle in front of the garage. You know, it's, it's only twenty-one feet. It's gonna be tight. And somebody coming in on all the traffic on Peacock, you know, making right-hand turns there. And then it'll be rough for all those people.
Danny? Michelle? Steve?
The only concern there is still not the driveway, but I think I mean unless it goes out by his truck, the trailer. I don't know what the guy does or something, you know. He's only got a thirteen-foot car right now and towards a compound.
Right. I, I I see no problem with this.
And just for the record, no two thirty-nine. And also it's a type-two action under seeker, so no seeker review is required.
Right. Thank you.
So if I may, if I can have a motion since the absence of the public, can I have a motion for a public hearing? Uh, to close the public hearing if I can speak?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Danny?
Second.
Steve?
All in favor?
Aye.
State the names here. Okay, and just going through the individual factors, Mr. Kleister set forth the four statutory factors. Does anybody have anything else to add or any discussion on that?
To cover the
Okay. And if I may have a motion to approve the request for area variance from forty-five feet to twenty feet, side yard variance.
I'll second it.
No, we can make I'll make, I'll make
Steve made a motion.
Oh, Steve made the motion, sorry, okay.
I, I, I gave it He said, he adopted that. I offered the motion language.
And Jim seconded it.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, good.
I'll send you the
And you're gonna build this yourself, right?
What's that?
You're gonna build this yourself in spare time?
What's that, do you not dig in the footings?
I will
You don't have to count them.
Put this in a tight decision and send it to you.
Appreciate it. Nice sitting you all again. Have a nice holiday, okay?
You too, Chris.
Well, that was a
They could all be
Easy. Yeah. Dave, nice try.
I thought he'd give it at least a little
Yeah, no.
A little try.
All right. The next applicant is for thirty-six North Street. And what did I do with the? I have so many copies and
Go into my staple month.
Yeah, I, I know, I have, there's so many copies, duplicates that, and I had it right in front of me. And I moved it, of course.
Okay, while you're looking for that, being that I am the building property, I'm willing to recuse myself from this decision or not decision meeting.
Okay.
All right, everyone? Yes.
And then
Enjoy.
Okay. The next will be thirty-six North Street. Notice hereby, given that the zoning board of appeals of Washingtonville will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 2nd, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM in Village Hall, Nine Fairlawn Drive, Washingtonville, New York, on the application of North thirty-six LLC, SBL one zero seven dash two dash sixty-three for the following area variances. Area variance from section three one five dash two five A one A of zoning code of the Village of Washingtonville to permit eight thousand three hundred fifty point eighty-eight square foot of minimum lot area per unit, eight total units where ten thousand foot, square foot per unit is required. Area variance from section three one five dash two five A one D, one of the zoning code to permit twenty-six point nine front yard where a fifty-foot minimum front yard is required, existing condition. Area variance from section three one five dash two five A one D two of the zoning code to permit point eight foot side yard setback where a three thirty-foot minimum side yard is required, existing condition. The application and plans are available for review at the Village Hall, Monday through Friday from eight AM to four PM. All interested parties may be heard at this time and place, by order of the zoning board of appeals. How are you?
Good. Hello, everyone. My name is David Matko, who are the architectural engineering firm representing the project. Finally, good to get here to present before the zoning board. We have gone through quite a few variation of designs to get to this point. So at this point in time, it appears that this is the design that was accepted or at least favored the most among all the others that we had done. What we're proposing is a six-unit multi-dwelling new building on thirty-six North and keeping the existing house that's there and converting it to a two-family unit. So the, there was a great consensus to try to allow that house to remain because of the historicity associated with the village. And I agree. I mean, my own office is a historic building, so I would, you know, favor that quite a bit. Even though it isn't disrepair and it needs a lot of work and a lot of funds to bring it up to code and to make it habitable. That, those variances are quite straightforward. It's a pre-existing non-conforming condition. It sits point eight feet away from the side yard already. So we need that variance or we're requesting that variance of twenty, of twenty-nine point two feet. The front yard there already sits twenty-six point nine feet from the, as a front yard setback, so we would need a variance of twenty-three point one feet. The six townhouse or six multi-dwelling units would require ten thousand square feet per unit, which is sixty thousand. We're asking for the variance of eight thousand three hundred and fifty square feet per unit, which is a variance of about eight percent to allow for the six units that would be allowed normally by the zoning code in addition to keeping, maintaining and restoring the existing house so that it would be used and remain part of the historical nature of the village. The Plan C two is kind of a combination of a whole bunch of different elements that are associated with the project. And we did it that way just to show that this project can be designed and engineered to a point where it would be feasible and will be allowed, will allow construction. The site, the site distances as we show on C two meet all the requirements for a new driveway. We're proposing a driveway towards the northeast side of the project. It, it is designed and specified to meet emergency vehicle access. It would lead all the way back towards the back, or lead all the way to the back of the townhouses or multi-dwelling units for garages at the back. So there would be six units, six garage units and one for, six garages, one for each unit. And then we provided six additional parking spaces for guests. Each multi-dwelling is about two thousand square feet, two floors, and it sits nicely. It sits a hundred feet back from the road. We're propose, we would enhance the landscaping there to, and to minimize the impact on the neighborhood. And also the planning board has encouraged, and we've proposed designs for the front facade of those townhouses to be in character with the village. So it would not, by contrast, it would not propose a modern design, you know, perchance, or for lack of a better word. But it would be something contextual with the neighborhood and within the Village of Washingtonville. The stormwater management that would be needed for this project would be underground. It's shown towards the west of the property. So it's, it would not be a visible retention pond or something with a depression in the ground. The underground chambers are not seen and covered all. In fact, we just did it on another project and it worked out really well. Now it gets covered over, seed sotted. No one sees it. We, the six units, new units are within the setback requirements of the zoning code and it meets the lot area requirements, meets everything else associated with the zoning code except for the eight thousand three hundred and fifty square feet needed per unit as per your zoning code. So as the result, we're here requesting that variance also.
Thank you.
That's everything.
Thank you.
How many times did you prop this up?
Anyone would
I've given, we've done six designs. I think I've four or five planning board meetings. I, there's many parts of this project I know by heart, so, but not myself.
Reciting them.
Oh, two thousand square feet, about two, two, three bedroom units.
I just wanted, there is no public, so we're not going to invite the public to the beginning.
I am the public.
You, you are not the pub, or you are you the public?
I am the public.
Okay, so I just wanted to clear that.
And I, and I just, just to put on the, just to put on the record, you have my memo of December 2nd. I did provide a copy to the applicant. I'm not gonna, I'm just going over the high points for you. We talked about the reason for the, the, the two yard variances. It's solely because they're doing an addition. If they were just improving the building, they, they wouldn't even be here because they'd be a pre-existing use. So that's, that's effectively to maintain the status quo of the existing house. With respect to the seeker posture, and I've spoken with Stephanie Tunick. The planning board has declared its intent to be lead agency. Today, the purpose of today's meeting was to have the public hearing and get a gauge as well as provide the applicant with a gauge of the, where we want to go with this. And then allow the planning board to conclude their seeker and then we can take formal, formal action. It's the same posture we did for Orange County Bagels
Right.
and some of our other applications. So that's, that's where, where we are. Given the seeker process, I would recommend we, we keep this open to allow that seeker process to, to conclude. The site does not require, does not require a referral pursuant to two thirty-nine. I just have this question, given the, the location of the site. Has this been referred to Shippo?
Yes.
Okay. And then I saw on the plans, right under thirty-five to east, the, the direction on the, at the top of the property is a strange box, and I think on one plan it said it was a concrete pad. Do you know what that is?
Is that really garbage?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
No, 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 no. On the property line, there's this unidentified object.
It's, it's, it's remains that will be removed. I don't know what it is.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to make sure, was it like a shed or something?
Oh, no.
I was wondering, something out there. Sorry.
No, no.
Does anybody, I have a couple of questions. Are all of the six units going to be the same size?
Yes.
All uniform?
Yes.
Okay. The, the home, which I have to say, on a personal note, I thank you for keeping the house there. I love that we have the old homes remaining in the village. And that's why we all kind of came up here is for the, the, you know, historic area. I'm just wondering, the house, if it is, because it is of old nature, if it is two-family allowable? How are you gonna do the two-family? Are you gonna do side by side or up in, you know, apartment? Because of the height of the ceiling has to be a certain height in order for it to be a legal dwelling.
Absolutely, you're right. Yes. To answer your question, it would be a, a unit on the first floor and a unit on the second floor. The second floor has
And you have the height, you do?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't been in there in years, so I, I just don't remember, I'm sorry.
I'll tell you, there's some interesting features of the, of the house.
It was, it was a beauty. Believe me, years ago was, it was beautiful. The, the architecture was gorgeous. So we're very happy about that. Happy about the storm drain because you, we do have flooding in the area and that, that was a big concern. Although maybe not our purview, but still it was a concern. The, the home, do you know how much it's going to cost to renovate the home?
I do not have an exact figure, but speaking from experience, it
It's gonna be costly.
It's gonna be a problem.
Right.
It's gonna be costly.
There are, you know, as, you know, actually, you know, as John knows, when even within the existing building code, when you go into a renovation and exceed to certain amounts, say fifty percent of the value of the area of the house, you have to bring it up to code. And that's, that's gonna take quite a bit.
Right. Because they didn't, they didn't build back that, you know, it was, it was way different. That's why I asked for the height of the upstairs because I know those homes were always a lot of little small rooms versus open plan, which is what most homes are being built today, for open, open floor plan.
That's true.
How many bedrooms in each of the townhouses?
Two.
And, and in the, and in the home?
Oh, in the home
So each one will be two-bedroom or one?
Probably two bedrooms and a den or three small bed. In the, in the existing house, I would imagine two bedrooms and a den.
Okay, so one with no closet, two bedrooms, so that you don't go over your two-bedroom. Keeping the one room, they, they could use the bedroom with no closet.
Right. And also on the second floor, it's, it's just like the old world construction, like in Manhattan. It's a stair leading up along the side. And it has the hallway that's a spine, you know, that accesses the rooms to the side. So you really gotta keep everything off that hallway.
Kind of like the railroad, the railroad track, yeah.
Exactly. Action, that's where I grew, grew up, in that type of arrangement. So you have the, you know, the bedroom. So I'm gonna imagine just because of the layout and accessing off the hallway, it'll have to be a two-bedroom kind of facility because we have to bring the kitchen up there and things like that.
And do you know how many square feet each of those will be?
You know
It's not really important, I, I'm just, I'm just curious.
It came up in the planning board meeting and I think, I think it's, the house is three thousand square feet.
So you think about fifteen
I think, but fifteen hundred each.
Fourteen, whatever, around there.
Yeah. I, and again, that did come up and we had a number and I, but it, it was definitely in the three thousand, uh, three thousand square foot range.
Do you, do you know if the townhouses are going to be owner occupied or rented?
They're not gonna be rented, they're gonna be sold.
They'll be owner occupied?
Yes.
That's nice.
Yeah.
I think I've covered all of my questions. Does anybody else have any, if I leave anything for you?
I'm gonna leave nothing.
Well, again, we're very happy with the new plans. We're very, it's very nice.
I have to say, it was an exercise and it took a while, but the final result really did evolve to the best.
Pleasing, yes.
Yes, it really did.
Yeah. And the fact that they're gonna build the townhouses in keeping with the country
Yes.
you know, aesthetics and
Well, like you, I mean, you have a lot of federal style architecture within the village. So I'd like to repeat those elements, the dentil molding, the cornices, you know, things of that nature. The one thing the planning board did not like that we had originally, what one of the original designs were walking up to the first floor. It felt to, to them like too much of
In the townhouses or the
Yeah, in the townhouses. So the, as you could see from the site plan, you know, the first floor will be closer to grade. And so you won't be walking up
Will there be basement? There can't be
Yeah, yeah, actually, the, the land slopes down towards the back. So that allows for the garages to fit onto each unit and then split the difference. So if you have a car, it's gonna, and you, it'll remain a small basement.
Okay.
So
Um, I do have one more question. Lighting, because there are neighbors.
Yeah.
And that always comes up and there's always people that are concerned about, especially when it's a, a unit like that or a bag, you know, of, of industry, you're not industry, but you know, a, a large unit. The lighting, how is that gonna affect?
Well, I haven't presented anything to the planning board, but I'll give you my own idea. I like to use historic building-mounted fixtures. And if you'd like to see one, Monroe ambulance building in Monroe's building, our design bill. But if you look at the lights on it, it very, they're like wall stunts with lantern-type fixtures on it.
Right.
I mean, I would like to do that. It definitely does not allow the light to emanate all the way across, it's key to within the boundaries. And I hope the planning board agrees with that.
Well, we certainly want it to be safe for the people that reside there, but you know, we want to also keep in mind being as it's a multi-unit that it's not going to affect people next door or right across the street, you know?
Sure. Well, I, I, I'm hoping, you know, once through the, we go through the planning board process, that the lighting can be limited to the front and the back. So the, the front would have building-mounted lights, you know, just across the walkway, limited to within the building. Then in the back, if we can't shine enough light to those six spaces, maybe one pole, then that would be on the west side of the property. That's my intent anyway.
And the wall, you're not touching the wall?
No.
The walls remaining?
The wall remains.
I don't know, based on the way, it almost looks like it's not their wall in touch, so.
Right. I don't know, I just know it's there, so I just wanted to make sure that, that we weren't, all right. I have no further questions, I'm very satisfied.
So at this point, what we can do because of the seeker process and we can't take formal action?
Right.
And it sounds like through the discussion, you've already done that. We'll leave the public hearing open?
Open, yes.
Okay. That doesn't necessarily mean you're coming back next meeting. We anticipate you'll go to the planning board, finish the seeker process.
Right.
When you're finished with the seeker process, given the timing, we'll probably re-notice that just in the paper because it's gonna be probably a month or two.
Okay, sure.
And then you can take formal action on the analysis.
Reasonable.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. So can I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Make a motion and we continue the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much. It was very informative, very concise. We appreciate that. I anticipated being here till all hours of the night for some reason, so it was very, very nice.
Are you unseating me waiting on long, when you
No, no, you were very, you missed it right along.
Jill, at least you'll wait until I vote, I'll back to the
Don't, don't pack up too fast, you're fine.
No, we're not leaving.
Thank you very much, board members. So again, it was followed great to get
Thank you, thank you.
Can I still just pack up to vote on the minutes?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I was gonna say that before.
Do I have to come up there?
I really, we should have done that first.
I, you know what, I go to that and then I go
Like I said, I didn't enjoy the crowd after we were
Then I go and I'm doing it in between.
Oh, no, I, I understand.
No, it's
Yeah.
Okay, Dave.
Put a big star next to it, so I wouldn't
Right, right. I remem, I did remember now. I was glad Danny stayed. All right. Make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right.
Any, any You're gonna abstain because you're
Changes are, yeah. Any changes or
Nothing, I saw, no.
Corrections, omissions, is anything? No?
No. Okay, so the, the only, so the three people I have voting are Jim, Mary, and Lenny
And, and then
Danny, I'm sorry. And then Michelle and Steve. Obviously, Michelle, you were just seated on the board and Steve was absent, so
You'll vote
Yeah.
The next, tonight, yeah.
Three minutes. Okay, I will finalize these and email them to you for the record.
Okay.
Is there any other?
I have a question. So I know cards went out when they first were gonna be low. Do they do the postcards like they usually do?
So, interesting, you should bring that up.
Yes.
When I first came on the board, there was a, people had been doing five hundred feet, something like that. An applicant An applicant, um, a particular applicant called me because he had like, he was gonna have like three grand worth of mailings because he caught one of, he caught the condo complex.
Right.
And he said, I looked at your code and your code doesn't say we have to do mailings. And he was right. The code does not provide that mailings are required. The village board is looking into it and to likely amend the code to bring the mailings back in some iteration, but I can't make an applicant do a mailing if it's not in code. It is published in the paper and it's published on the website, so.
We've always done them, but it was just because we've always done them.
Right.
But we actually looked at.
So now all the applicants have caught on and I'd be hard pressed to say you gotta go do ma, I, I have no leg to stand on, so.
Because I know just on my block on Emerson, other than myself, is two new families.
Right.
One that's moving in, I think this weekend, and then one that's closing shortly.
So with any, um, it's in the, it's in the public paper, generally word of mouth, but yes, the, I, the, the mayor is aware of it and he's asked me to, and I'll follow up with him actually. Cause I have a couple of things to follow up with him this week about, you know, moving that, introducing that local law to change the notices, so. And effects, we would be consistent. The planning board, I believe, sends notices and that is in the code. ZBA not in the code, planning board in. I'm sorry, who seconded the minutes?
Jim.
Jim. All righty, well, if there's nothing further, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second the motion.
Everyone have a good night and if we don't see each other, a Merry Christmas.